Thank you all out there in TV land. Step forward, May 15. I believe the rain is over.
You're a little funster.
If we can open, I need a motion to sign the warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? And we're all scribbling away. Motion for the minutes of May 1st. May 1st, public hearing. And May 10th, special select board meeting. If I could go up there.
Yes.
Do you have a motion for that?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And all those in favor? All right, on the agenda is no, all, I do have new business and we're going to start with the master of ceremonies Jim there at Water Street so we can get you down that way and you can get back to polishing and cleaning. And this is the liquor license for the Water Street Tavern. Has anything changed structurally? No?
When are you opening?
Week tonight.
A week? Oh yay!
You get that?
Week from tonight.
Everybody's opening.
Water Street.
I think Frank will be tomorrow.
I think you're correct. The 23rd?
Yeah, we're going the 22nd. Frank's tomorrow.
Yep.
Frank's tomorrow.
Okay, I'm not sure about the COVID.
I don't know, I saw some scrambling around over there today.
Well, we all went to a food show yesterday.
Well, that's good.
All right.
The weather is not cooperating with anybody right now.
It's nasty.
It's wicked.
It's wicked, Matt.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Okay, with the liquor license is also coming with a blue pen.
It has to be signed in blue.
Blue.
Why?
Because Jim Carrey said so, liar or liar.
They have to.
Because it's blue.
They have to be original.
Is it originally?
Yes.
Can you come by in the morning to pick it up? Copy the?
I will, yep.
That'd be awesome. You were open at?
Eight o'clock.
Eight AM?
Eight o'clock.
They all have smiles on their faces, so they'll be happy to see.
They always do.
Yeah. So thank you and welcome.
Yes, yes.
So I need to make a motion, go, to approve the Water Street Taverning license. Start a motion.
I would so move that we approved the Water Street Tavern license.
I will second that.
And fifth, all those in favor? So moved. Well said, Jim, thank you very much.
Welcome back, Jim.
Appreciate it, y'all.
What is this?
Open municipal bids.
All set, okay. Item two on the agenda, always a crowd pleaser on TV, the opening of municipal bids.
I got it.
Which are, be following here as we speak.
You have one of these in your packets if you want to follow along.
Follow the backs and all.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
We're ready to end those.
I know, no, I had it, never mind.
How's yours?
This one.
I suppose you've got yours all out.
Mr. Rawlins, your little columns or everything, you're all set to go with these, would you say?
Oh, okay, it was on the other side of that.
All right, well, good go. This is a landfill mowing bid.
I think you opened it?
Yes, it is now your.
Weather opener in that box, please.
I'll do my trusty.
I don't know if I want to give her any of the chart.
Do you want me to mention, do we just speak of this? Or do you want?
Speak clearly.
Yes, all right.
She says right there on the sign there.
This is for the landfill mowing. And this is a bid from Gray Morrison, who cut the landfill area twice, once during June and once in October, for $130 plus 150, equalling $300.
So the second mowing is $20 more than the first.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on. It's 150 and 150. I'm sorry.
If you're gonna do math, you gotta do it.
I have to get my glasses on, I'm sorry. Sorry, my apologies to Gray.
And all those out there in TV land.
Yes.
All right, so if I've got 150, 150, I believe, airport, that is our?
Only bid?
One and only bid?
Well, I make a motion, we.
That's more than the gray.
Second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll put this right back in this totally shredded envelope.
He's so critical.
Do it reverse. Next, we will be going to Town of Lubeck Airport Mowing Bid, of which?
Two.
Two. First bid.
Isn't this, don't they always, in the crew, they kill them with the letter opener? Isn't that one of the?
Bid number one for airport mowing.
Yes, okay. Mowing airport, I will mow the airport as needed for safe landing, for $150 per mowing. This is also from Gray Morrison.
So that would be 150 per West?
No.
By the airport authority? Isn't that you?
He just does it.
As needed.
That's the price, as needed. Okay, 150 dollars.
Okay, and we have another one?
We have another.
We'll leave these open so that, um. I'm sorry, it flies out of my hand.
I asked about the lengths one time, they said, as, say, landing, basically like five or six inches, as bad as you want it to let it get.
So we're not putting on it?
No.
Well, if it's really long, it becomes a softer landing, doesn't it?
Well, you get stuff quicker.
Yeah, exactly. You could just get the weeds there. All right, this is from our chairman, this is from James Doherty. I wish to submit a bid for the airport mowing within the Town of Lubeck to be completed on an as required basis, at a cost of $139 each time. I've enclosed proof of my insurance, and am in the process of obtaining proof of contractor status. Well, that is quite impressive. 139 as opposed to 150. And a comprehensive letter, I must say. Are you smirking? You're all smirking. I'm gonna miss that smirk when you leave us.
Okay. I'll sit here and smirk till I'm done.
Do we have any?
I just say, we always have gone with the lowest bidder.
Yes.
So I will make a motion that we go with the Doherty working around.
Yeah, I would accept that.
I know, you don't have to, no, you don't at all. I actually heard, and you know how the great line is, that Gray was not going to do any of it this year, so I guess that was a rumor.
So we have a motion for accepting the bid from?
James Doherty.
James Doherty. Who made that, that was you?
That was me here, yeah.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
I like it when people send letters and proof of insurance and comprehensive stuff, so that's tough.
You like that? Would you have given, would you have given that student an A?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Joanne, you're gonna miss.
I am gonna miss. I'm gonna miss, yes.
All right, that goes back to you. For that one, we have a Town of Lubeck Municipal Trash Bid.
Oh, did that one last?
Did that one last?
Do the trash last?
Do the fuel, oil first.
Is that so we know where to throw these away when we're done? This one, we have for Dead Rivers for heating oil and heating propane. And RH Foster for heating oil, propane, gasoline, diesel, and general assistance, so.
That's how the bids add went out.
Okay, so maybe they changed something here, so.
There may be multiple bids for the foster.
Yeah, yeah, for Foster, yeah, yeah. Municipal heating, propane, and heating oil.
Oil and propane, yes. Okay, here we go. And that's Dead River.
No?
Oh, dead, yeah, that's Dead River.
This is Dead River. I would like to submit the following propane bid for your consideration, beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending May 31st, 2020. Option one.
What was the date for?
July the 1st to May?
31st.
31st.
But it needs to go to June.
June.
Very long, I think, though.
Yes, yes.
We'll just accept that as a payback.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
A fixed price of gallon, 1.4982, option one. Or option two, landed plus fixed margin of 50 cents. Today landed cost, .956125, margin 50, .50. So today delivered price would be 1.4561 per gallon. That's almost too much information.
What was the first option, one please?
Okay. And the second one you got?
Propane.
Now, do you want me to do the fuel, oil bid? Okay. Option one, fixed price of 2.4670 gallon.
2.4670.
4670 gallon. And option two, landed plus fixed margin of .20 cents.
You add the 20 cents.
And then you add the two of those together and you come up with $2.51, okay, 5113 per gallon. Very comprehensive, yeah.
And that is Dead River.
Yeah, that is Dead River.
And there's nothing else in there?
Nothing else. Now, RH Foster.
So you would do their propane and fuel first.
Oh, it's a long letter. Dear Board, thank you for the opportunity to provide a quote for the heating oil, general assistance, fuel, furnace maintenance, and gasoline diesel for the Town of Lubeck. Are we going to, this is all of this stuff?
We'll do propane first.
Yeah, okay. Propane municipal, we can offer a fixed price of 2,900 gallons of propane for $1.899 per gallon. Any gallons exceeding the 2,900 will be priced at the Machias Rack cost plus 20 cents. What do you want me to do next?
Heating oil.
Heating oil, municipal, we can offer a fixed price of 4,000 gallons of heating oil for $2,489 per gallon. Any gallons exceeding the 4,000 will be priced at the Machias Rack cost plus 15 cents. This price is indicative, meaning we need to re-quote based on the market changes, which may occur between the time of this quote and the final decision by the selectmen. Okay, general assistance fuel? Okay. General assistance fuel, heating oil, and kerosene will be billed at the Machias Rack plus 15 cents on delivery day. For example, today's delivered heating oil price for fuel assistance would be 2.499. Kerosene would be 2.879. Any off route or after hours deliveries can be provided with additional $100 fee. Anyway. And now the yearly furnace maintenance, yes? Ready? 24 hour coverage can be provided on service of furnaces. Our current hourly rate is $75. We can also, that's a little bit more than what we earn, isn't it? We can also provide a silver efficiency contract at locations which qualify for $149 each. These units would be subject to inspection prior to putting a contract in place. These are one-year contracts and include an annual cleaning. Okay? Now, gasoline and diesel for trucks.
One note on the yearly maintenance for the furnace. In the invitation for bid letter, I explained that we currently are under a warranty that doesn't run out until the fall. So we will have to continue with that company to.
That's Dead River, right?
Yeah.
They do know that.
Yeah. Okay.
They didn't read the letter on the way, but.
Okay, gasoline and diesel for trucks. We can provide an RH Foster fuel card for each vehicle for use at any dealer or direct station. The card will allow an eight and a half percent discount from the pump price for either gasoline or diesel use. If you have any questions, call Jim. Oh, I know that guy. Okay. Got it, everybody?
Do we have any questions?
How do they buy the fuel now?
Fuel carriage.
That must be very convenient, I must say.
Well, for tracking, you can track it, you know, so easily with that.
Well, on the, on heating oil and the propane, I'd say we'd be crazy not to go to fix, fix rate. And, I mean, Dead River's got that.
Got that.
So I make a motion that we accept Dead River on propane and the oil for, for the heating.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Some amendments on the propane, fuel. And the general assistance, yearly maintenance, gas, and diesel is bid from RH Foster.
Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then.
They'd be separate, or we can just do the, because they're, right?
Well, I make a motion that we do Foster for general assistance and for the fuel card.
I will second that.
Yes.
And all those in favor? All right, and then if they're aware that they would make an amendment or something, of course, that makes it, please.
She said.
Who's the station?
General assistance. I didn't mention yearly furnace maintenance, because.
Yeah, she didn't mention that.
You said, in September, October.
Not even except, I don't know. You have a right to refuse, but maybe.
Do you want them to rewrite it first?
What are you getting at for now, from Dead River?
I'm talking about maintenance, furnace maintenance.
Well, we were, she didn't include that.
Yeah, so let's just.
I didn't mention that, because Dead River's already got the, until the fall.
Right, so this was for the?
The warranty on it.
This was for the assistance and then the gasoline diesel. Now, it was a motion by Joanne, seconded by Jason. All those in favor? Unanimous.
And when that warranty runs out, what you guys might want to do is just contact Dead River and RH Foster and have them bid again. RH Foster might not be interested, I, I think, they didn't reply on this.
Will these back in the envelope?
A warrant, whatever.
Okay. Right.
There you go.
Yeah, I'd love to see a warrant.
You did very well.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Wacker, who normally opens services, would be very proud. Very acceptable.
Do we have any vehicles we can?
That is all we have at this time.
And no trash?
We're always talking trash.
Trash bid.
Thank you so much.
And yet you go from the other end.
Well, you notice that I am right-handed.
I'll read that training manual.
This is from NoSo Rubbish Removal. We, here at NoSo Rubbish, would be honored to continue servicing the Town of Lubeck with a municipal, municipal trash removal. Our bid for the 2008, 2018, 2019 municipal years is as follows. Do you want me to read all this stuff?
No.
No, okay. Good.
So removed.
Yes, I, I so moved that we stay with NoSo Rubbish. They've been with us forever and they've helped us out a lot on different issues.
Yes.
Picking up things for free. Actually, I think this weekend you guys are donating a couple of dumpsters for the cleanup. We're thankful for that.
Yes. They have always been helpful. 150 a month. Or the price of one sweep across the airport with a lawnmower.
Yeah.
So I'll make that a motion.
And this is our only trash bid, and notation for those on TV, and for the record, the body going in front of you. Was Jason removing himself, and I'm standing from the boat, as we opened up NoSo.
It was not a former town administrator, as may have suspected.
So, we had a motion.
I want the, ah.
You know, I wasn't gonna bring that up. What, that, that body moving across the TV, I tempted, but I didn't. I just wanted she did. So we had a motion from Joanne.
Yes, yes.
Second? All those in favor?
The best thing?
I need a backup.
Come back over here and get this.
Come on, John.
Oh, my word, my word. Okay.
Uh, anyway, adult education is next on the agenda.
Love that. Okay. It's time to renew the contract for adult ed. It's the same price that we set upon, 17,900. That money does not come out of the taxpayer, money of our general fund, at last year's town meeting, the reimbursement from the school, 133 something thousand.
That's right.
Went into a CD, and that, the town voted on to fund the adult ed out of that, so we will withdraw out of the CD as needed to pay the yearly payment. And I've included a report. I checked with Jane Blackwood, and as of Monday, we've had 12 students go through the Axiom Adult Ed program. And she's got a breakdown here. Eight, digital literacy, workforce development skill, two, adult transitions, and two in the HISET, and that is the former DEV program, that's as known as HISET now.
What is it actually known as? HI?
HISET.
HISET.
Yeah.
SET.
Could I ask, do we have any suggestions as to course offerings that they could offer?
They have a website.
Oh, okay.
Yep, Axiom Adult Education.
I'll tell you, and this may be out here for the general public. I have been to several meetings lately, and they have to do with the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. And they are, the Bicycle Coalition of Maine now has a roving bus bicycle repair service. And we talk about this all the time, about the lack of bicycle repair shops up this coast. The closest one is Ellsworth. And we get more and more cyclists coming up and down here. And I am convinced that it would be a thriving business if somebody would open it up. And certainly in Lubeck, it's a golden opportunity. We have a revolving loan, we have lots of opportunities, God knows, we've got some vacant buildings. I would encourage anybody who is an interest in, could do this.
And an Uber.
Oh, yeah, and a budding Uber, Uber.
No, we really don't need that.
But we could use a bicycle repair shop. And it's not something that will take a college education, it's not, you know, high-end.
It could be repair shop slash mentor.
Yeah, you could do it every, I think as it stands, it might be a summer-only job. But if you wanted to expand, you could do snowmobiles or, you know, whatever. But it is a golden business opportunity here, and I would love to have somebody care.
Lubeck had years ago, a, right across from where the bridge is now, a bicycle repair shop.
Yeah.
And it was a thriving business. It was.
And considering the new ecotourism and hiking, biking, all that stuff, I think there is a definite need, definite need.
Well, we should just put a plug out there that this, these classes happen right down at LCOC, the former Lubeck High School, end of the way of the high school. And if you're interested, contact me, contact adult ed.
Can they call Axiom directly? They can.
Yep, anytime. So this is free right here.
I know of two people that are interested in.
And nice facility, it's often repainted, remodeled in there, so. So we need a motion.
And it's to have me sign it, the agreement with my name.
Yes, I would like you to go and perpetuate the very active Axiom learning experience of the school.
What's that?
Wait, do we have a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor? Next, there appears to be a recycling update.
Oh, yes. That's.
But that, would you put that on the agenda?
Well, I think I asked to be put on the agenda. In lieu of Kenny coming here, we have, I should tell you that recycling is in a crisis mode right now, thanks to the gentleman in Washington DC and the gentleman in China, who seem to think tariffs are the way to go. And subsequently, everything in this country has risen in price, as, as it is in China. And it is definitely having an effect on recycling. We are now in a position where we are not getting as much money returned for mixed paper. And it has gone from, what, 800 to 500 or even less. And the only reason we're perpetuating with the recycling is that it would cost us more money to have it sent up to Marion Transfer. But quite frankly, it is a serious, it's a serious situation. For instance, 18 bales of mixed paper is like $500, 76 cents.
To get rid of?
Yeah, and it's.
We pay to get rid of it.
Yeah, and it's just, it's not good. We used to be getting in a lot of money here. And we now have less and less that we can reset.
What do you pay per ton?
I don't know. Oh, 2, 25 per ton. 40 bales cardboard, 70.
You can get rid of it for $100 a ton.
Yeah. I think Kenny and you talked recently.
Yeah, you can get rid of it for $100 a ton in Marion.
Anyway, it means we get less, but we get some. My, my hope, go ahead, Renee.
I was thinking it's 5 cents a pound at Marion, but it's 3 cents. We did the numbers, and it was still cheaper to recycle the mixed paper.
It's not.
But we did.
Even after labor, I mean, we're, we're in the riz, $25,000 every year in recycling. That's it. Yeah, it's the tax cost, 25,000 a year.
And, and the thing is, we are.
We've got to look at other ways.
Yeah, and we are committed to recycling. I mean, the town is committed to recycling.
So we should recycle.
And we should continue, because sooner or later, you know, the powers that be will wake up and realize that it has an impact on every person in this country. And considering how we are so terribly worried about carbon footprint and various other things, I, it would be who, the powers that be, to look to recycle. other things, it would be who the powers that be to look to recycling. I understand we still do recycled cans, that still goes away. And we always have the ongoing dilemma of pulverized glass, which, you know, we just have to get creative and do something with it.
While we're on the subject of recycling, is e-waste still open?
E-waste is open and lucrative, and that's fine. And there's always a market for that. You know, we don't like to think of going to little third world countries, but we've all seen those pictures. But thank God, we're okay.
Well, e-waste has a slight story right now. The company that we were using were shut down or closed. But Kenny has worked out another arrangement with another e-waste. So yes, it is still going, but.
And I know some people, because I found a piece of electronic that's probably been in my house for years and years and years. I know everyone's got one. I didn't think people still had those big giant TVs, but I saw one there.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
It weighed eight hundred pounds.
Yeah, the consoles.
But even the thirty-two inch screen, and it goes forty-eight inches deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're still there, I can't believe it.
You get on the marker, he's gonna charge you thirty cents a pound on the recycling.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if I could, if you could indulge me one more thing, because I'm on a recycling business here. I put something on Facebook about wind-powered energy and solar energy. And I always do that, because I want people to start thinking about these things. But I got a response from Paul Sestone, who is here in the summertime and frequently. And he sent me this wonderful email, which I thought I wanted to share with everybody. He said, "I've always thought that Lubeck could leverage and harness, in a clean and safe, unobtrusive, and even beautiful way, its tidal and wind energy. And regardless of the latitude, which is about the same as Venice, Italy, also take advantage of solar energy. Such engineering housed in artistic structures and made transparent for interesting viewing would even bring visitors to see the cutting-edge technology, like visitors to the Hoover Dam, or automobile, or even donut factories. People like to see how industrial things work when they can stay clean, while not all communities would have the natural energy resources that Lubeck could tap and showcase. It could be a model of clean energy for the world and be an economic boon to its citizens. Combined with its beautiful setting, its history, its lobster and fishing docks, sailing and recreational boating, its brewery and fine restaurants, its local produce, its artistic community, its music and art summer program, its marathon, its coastal parks and trails." You can tell he misses Lubeck. "Its gateway to Campabella, if done in a controlled and thoughtful manner, Lubeck could thrive more than it does now and still keep its charm. While I have only been a summer visitor the past decade, plus I love Lubeck and its people, I really don't want to see Lubeck become the easternmost version of Far Harbor or Deer Isle, overrun by passing people and overdevelopment. I would however love to see it prosper while remaining tranquil and relaxed. I envy of these people, Dan and Melissa Frank and Judy. They have wonderful summers spent there, and I miss artistic friends, the pool breezes, the trails and beaches, and everything that made Lubeck the best town to Terry and she is great." I just wanted to show you, because obviously this person cares deeply for this community, and would like to see it thrive. Anyway, onward and upward.
Onward we go. Sort of related to recycling and for, as the gentleman here mentioned, beautifying our beautiful town, we have roadside cleanup.
Ah, yes.
On May seventeenth and eighteenth.
That is, yes, yeah, once again. The students of Lubeck community, of the elementary school, are once again this year going to go around the town and do the cleanup with buses. We have yellow vests for them. They will start Friday morning. They will, last year, and they're saying this year, North Lubeck Road, South Lubeck, various places that they are identified as being really littered.
Literally.
Literally littered. And it will all culminate at eleven-thirty, I think, we close. They will meet down at the Lubeck School. And weather permitting, they will be outside for a little barbecue. And I'm going to provide hot bunch sundaes and build your own brownie sundaes for them. So it'll be a good thing. And then Saturday, there is a cleanup downtown for working adults. The library, Lubeck landmarks, Water Street, just all up and down that street to kind of tidy up. And as I said, that's weather permitting.
And you can also clean up your own street. You can either, A, bring the bag, you can have.
With bags?
Didn't you have a dumpster up here that we could use?
Yeah, we can use anyone.
And then also the town.
Public works will pick up any trash as well.
Ricky, I think he and the guys go around the next day or.
I will get what I can, not anymore.
So if nothing else, if you could just step outside your door yard and maybe go a hundred yards each way or something?
And help out. Drive way to driveway.
Drive way to driveway? Anything like that, whoever you wanna. And just leave it back, that would be wonderful. And that is this weekend.
And before anybody questions, we have also the rules such the same as last year. People were concerned about needles, if the kids saw needles. They are strictly instructed, they have latex gloves. If they see a needle, they are to contact adult immediately and have the adult will take care of it.
Because the needles do look like they're latex.
And, yeah, but they will have the latex gloves.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't think there are any more concerns, but that was definitely a concern last year. Okay.
Thank you very much for that update as well.
Thanks for getting ice cream.
On May twenty-fifth, which is a week from Saturday, Memorial Weekend, we have a really happening event at the Lubeck Fire Station from nine to eleven AM.
Rabies Clinic for Dogs and Cats, provided by the Little River Veterinary out of Perry.
And is there a charge for that?
Yes, it'll be collected here by the vet.
They are awesome.
All right, that is May twenty-fifth, Fire Station, nine to eleven AM. Reminder again, continues to go out for nomination papers, available and due on June seventh, which believe it or not is right around the corner.
We are going to lose our beloved Joanne.
So if you even possibly think, you can fill the shoes of, you have one select board position available, we have two school boards?
Water, one water and three budgets.
One water and three, and the budget, get them in fast, because those nominations are stacking up for budget. And I don't know how we're gonna pick three out of that stack. Because if you're on that, you could speak your mind.
Yeah, right.
I know your shot.
Yeah.
And, boy, we're just getting too nice. But I guess, Monday, May twenty-seventh, which is Memorial Day, the office is gonna be closed.
I have one thing before we get done too. When's the budget change? June?
Budget change?
I mean, you know.
Yes, let's go here beginning July first.
Why wouldn't we entertain the thing of moving up our sand bed to like July sometime? Put it out for bid in July. And that way, we're gonna put up dry sand. They have more time to do it. They're not pressed, you don't have thirty other towns ordering their sand all at the same time. I mean, and the guys actually have a little more time to deal with it.
I thought Ricky talked about.
I mean, you're gonna put up dry sand, it's gonna be a hell of a lot easier for you. Yes.
It's good to know. I mean, it's.
You might get salt.
Yeah, yeah.
The contract with the county, they get a, we go in on the county bid assault usually.
Committee updates. I will start. In association with that bike repair rental owner, you're out there somewhere, revolving loan, where you can come get papers at any time, the town office, is going to be on June tenth at three PM, right here. And tentatively, I don't have confirmation, but tentatively, the AOS ad hoc is meeting a week from today, the twenty-second, at four PM. That's me?
Well, I think I've kind of mentioned about recycling. Yeah, and we are, we are holding tight. And in terms of the economic development, we are waiting to hear from Pioneer Broadband, who are writing a grant this month as we speak, that's due on the thirtieth.
Now, do I understand that Charter has taken over for Spectrum, is that true, out here?
You mean as the main squeeze, the.
Have they?
That's, I heard rumor.
So if that is in fact true, would there be maybe an opportunity also to speak with them?
Well, I had done that initially.
When it was Spectrum?
And, yeah. No, 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 they, no, consolidated, used to be Fairpoint. And, yeah, no. They are not, they are not into the fiber optic broadband.
No, but then, but then you had Time Warner takeover out here. I mean, they're downtown here, Spectrum, that's Time Warner.
Yeah.
And then what I've heard is that Charter Communications has bought this area from Time Warner.
That would be lovely, because they have a much bigger, better, have a much bigger footprint here.
So if you might want to check that, because if that's true, we might, it might have the conversation. Well, not from Pioneer, not from Pioneer, but Charter might be more apt maybe to run some lines down streets that Time Warner had no interest in doing.
That's entirely possible.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying.
And I would say true, because Charter Communications have been much more amenable and much easier to speak with.
Right, so it might be worth a jingle.
They came to ops.
Right, because the, I know some of the ROI's have not been advantageous.
Yeah.
They might be a little more open now that they've just taken over to get down a couple of streets.
I think they will, I think they will, yeah.
So I don't know if you could reach out to them and see what.
Yeah, we don't have that guy come to talk to us. He would be a good person to speak with.
That it for your?
That's it, babe. Next week is, and you have a council day?
Yes, I have here, next week EMS Fire, Lubeck American Legion, ladies auxiliary will be hosting a recognition of service for Down East EMS and Lubeck Fire Department.
Awesome.
That is May twenty-first, which is Tuesday. At six PM at the Lubeck Fire Station.
Next week is EMS and Fire Appreciation Week all over the state. And a lot of different places are holding things in honor of their members. And we do also have, other than that, a Medivance, at the Medivance Hall in Medivance, a spaghetti feed in appreciation for the EMS Fire crews all over. And that is on Thursday night at five, next Thursday.
Incredible work. Unfortunately, it's always seems like far too much work.
Yes. And my final meeting on the board of Down East EMS is June twenty-four at four-thirty. And I would like to thank all the board members for working with me. I can be a pain sometimes. No. And Bobby Hood is taking over in my position, and appropriately so is the fire chief here. I think he'll do good. And I'd just like to thank all of our workers, very good, very faithful and good employees. Down East EMS is doing better than ever.
Yeah, if you remember, just a couple of years ago, they were having discussions on what town they were gonna pull out of.
Oh, I mean, it's just great.
And it's really gonna turn around, so congratulations to all of that. Thank you, a little early for you and all your efforts there.
Thank you.
Harbor board, five twenty, six o'clock, we're ready. And that's all I got.
I've got Shellfish Apparel. There will be a Shellfish meeting on May twentieth at five PM here. That's a new meeting that was just scheduled today, because they have something on the agenda that needs to be addressed, so. May twentieth. The one after that is June third at six. And check our website for the conservation. They just had a conservation this past Saturday, but there are two more before licenses go on sale July first, so. They're on our website, they're on Facebook.
Do you have any public comments?
As I was away last week, I got a call from Renee about the land zone crossing in. And I understand that you folks are gonna go through with it, from what I understand it's gonna go in.
You're saying the crossing that's gonna be in front of your house?
That's correct.
I think that we had no choice, actually. I think it was them.
Well, I'm hearing from Paul, he called about something.
Yeah.
Listen, I mean, just looked into it, just like I said to Renee the other day. When this all took place, everybody looked at whoever walked it, looked at a little small little frame, maybe an inch by an inch, if that. I talked to Rell after I left here the other day with Renee, and he says it's mandatory to put in for the school's safety. So I said to him, are you gonna have someone there for a crosswalk where the kids go back and forth? And they were silent. I said, so is the town paying for that? Well, that's up to the town, that's nothing to do with me. So then I said, if you don't do that, are you gonna put electronic ones in? And who's gonna pay for that? I honestly feel, if you fellows put the crunch on to him, you can do away with that and save three or four thousand dollars. To me, you're gonna be lucky if you have a school there in two years down there, if that. You've got fifty-four kids in that school system down there. Eight kids to a classroom from first grade to eighth grade. I understand everybody needs a job in times of top tier go back, it's the goddamn depressed area. But goddamn, let's stop and use our head a little bit and say, look, are we gonna throw three or four thousand dollars away for nothing, for the town to beat up, or the state to beat up, for plow? Really? Where's this money coming from? The town can't afford to put any more money out than what we're putting out now here. If the crunch comes down and you say no to them, and no is no, they stand up, what are they gonna do?
I think it's been a difficult, this whole sidewalk process has been difficult since the get-go.
It didn't do much in the sidewalk, Richard.
Yeah.
Because everybody voted on the sidewalk. When Carol and John and the CES fellow walked it, that's when that got thrown in. Nobody knew nothing about that landing going down, that going in, when the sidewalk thing went in. That was something thrown in altogether different.
I saw.
And the town of Lubeck cannot afford to keep doing the way it's going here.
Well, I can't, you know, and I, to this day, I don't understand the wisdom in putting the crosswalk to come in front of your house, when further down that street, they're still gonna have to cross in front of major traffic to get to the school. That didn't make sense to me, and it still doesn't.
When I talked to him the other day on the phone, I had a little hunting girl, Mary the hunting girl daughter was walking out. And I says, you know, I would like to take a picture of her and not get in trouble and send it to you, Paul, and show you where they walk.
She was walking up the old.
By the nursing home.
Right by the nursing home, I saw her.
That's where they walk out.
They know the way to do it.
I honestly feel that the town of Lubeck, if they really come pushing trouble on this, you can do away with that.
This guy that you're talking to, Paul, I can't really say what I think of him, right here. But he likes to strut his stuff.
He doesn't care about the town. The only thing he cares about is the goddamn sidewalks going in.
He doesn't care about any other town.
And then you're gonna maintain, on top of that, you're gonna buy a plow and stove load and everything to maintain it all? The town cannot afford to do any more of this stuff.
I'll tell you what they're gonna do, they're gonna take it eminent domain, no matter what.
I know what they're gonna do.
I mean, what they, what they said, he contradicted himself twice.
He doesn't even know about this stuff right here that I've looked at. I says, and you work for the main DOT?
Yeah.
So you're contradicting yourself right now. I says, who do I believe, why do I believe the town?
Yeah.
Well, Cheryl told me that don't speak to the town board, you come direct to me. Well, Cheryl told me that don't speak to the town board, you come direct to me? Or do I listen to you folks? Who do I listen to now? I'm just like a bungee car, meeeeh, and that's the way I've been."
No.
Right from eleven twenty-eight.
He's gonna make us do it. He is gonna make us do it, right now, it's a game.
The satisfaction is, I never got no notification on nothing from the town, all the state, from this result. The only notification I got was when it came into the mail on eleven twenty-eight from the state domain.
Yeah. And they guaranteed us, sitting right up here, that they were contacting every abutted homeowner.
When I got notified, it was eleven twenty-eight, I'm telling you, I walked and I called.
I believe it. I, I don't believe a word, that whole thing, that whole, I was so mad the other day that I, I mean, it's just, it, it's ridiculous.
It's stupid to throw three or four thousand dollars.
Why, why they're making us do what they're doing. But I also, Renee has tried and tried her best to work.
Oh, I know she has, I know she has been doing it, believe me.
She has.
I've been up there, looked at it.
It's a state, believe me, it's a state.
All they wanna do, Paul, is say, "If you change this, we're gonna go back to the drawing board and we're gonna charge the town twenty thousand dollars." Is that not right?
More than that.
Right.
If we cut it out altogether?
Yeah.
We have to pay back almost eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, see, that's what they're doing, she's playing the game, yeah.
That's the whole sidewalk, if we did away with the whole plan.
No, I mean, see...
You know what it is, it's a makeup of the sewer department. Remember way back when, when they told us that we had, had to do the sewer? And Jonesport said, "No, they're making us and we're not doing it." And we did it anyway because they mandated that we do it. Jonesport never did do theirs.
No, no.
The same thing.
But I mean, it's ridiculous for us, they, they don't let money away.
Now, is that gonna hamper your business, putting that in there?
Yeah, it is, yeah. Or if there's a kid walking on there, and I have a pastor who's in, and all of a sudden that kid walks in back in front of that car in the back of it, and he runs him over. Who's reliable for it, town, or am I reliable for it? That's something else you folks won't think of. Who's reliable for it? Really, stop thinking about it, seriously. And I've gone over this with him a dozen times on the phone.
Yeah.
And every time I say something, I get silenced from him for a few minutes.
Oh, yeah.
But I have no problem.
Renee, Renee's talked to him a hundred times.
Oh, I know, I've been up here talking to Renee and stuff, I know.
It's, it's just ridiculous what you're doing.
Yeah. It's just brutal, because it then will land in the parking lot.
When she came to my house, it's Cheryl, and I told him, he said, "You'll get notified in two weeks from somebody." Three months later, I had a lady come on February the twentieth, on a snowstorm day, that I had to give up work for two hours to talk to her. She said, "The blueprints are all printed out, Mr. Cage, and we can't change them." And I said to her, "Why wasn't I notified before any of this other brownup, that this piece here was going in?" And she just, and as far as it goes.
You want to cross the street because of the parking lot?
That's still state properties, much as Paul's.
Where he's got a business in the parking lot, they'll put it on here.
And it doesn't make sense to put this there, and no matter how you look at it, it's a danger to the kids to be crossing on that side because of the, they have to cross further down. It makes much more sense if you're gonna have to put a crosswalk by the way the nursing home was, because then they continue on in a straight line. And I'm wondering whether there is some safety issue that could be, could supersede this.
Yeah, 'cause he's not giving an inch, he's a, he's a...
No, well, it's bureaucracy, you know, it's bureaucracy.
These aren't checked, turned tail twice.
Yes, yeah. I think if you, maybe we should go with the safe, you know, whatever that department is.
Who is gonna be the head of this project for the state? Does anybody know yet? The resident?
No, that's what we have, going out for bid.
Okay. What you do is when the resident comes here, I've never, I've worked on a ton of state jobs, federal jobs. When the resident hits here, you talk to the resident, and he has the power to make changes on, on the spot. This guy's not gonna give anything, all he wants to do is threaten the town. He's gonna, you know, "If you do this, it's gonna cost you twenty thousand. If you do that, it's gonna cost you eighty thousand."
You're gonna pay back grants.
So when the resident gets here, I'd like to have Paul be with us, and the resident, and sit down and say, "This is foolish." And if he has any years' experience whatsoever, or common sense, when it comes to construction, he's gonna say, "This is one dumb idea." Period.
Well, it just makes sense that when the kids are coming from school, they're gonna follow the right-hand side of the road. They're gonna go up on the right-hand side and cross right there by the nursing home.
But the guy...
But when we looked at Google Earth, it did show the, the crosswalk years ago was where they plan on putting it right now. So I think that's how they came up with, these engineers, uh, they looked at Google, uh, Google Earth and saw where that old crosswalk was, so that's why they're doing it in that same footprint, so.
That's the day when we had hunting students and they actually walked.
Right.
The bus didn't, the mom and dad was...
Kids, kids don't walk, yes.
They don't walk, the bus, they just walk. They take the bus.
The one you saw the other day, first student I seen walking in.
But I like your idea, I like that idea, and I, I made that a motion that we do that.
We've done it a hundred times, that's the way you work.
But you talk to the resident and, um, see what happens.
This guy, this guy sitting up there saying, "I'm gonna get my way," period.
And she's the same way, that Cheryl's the same way.
Yes.
See, I don't know her at all, I know, I know her all by the...
The way she splashed up to me, I says, "I'm not saying nothing." Give you folks any right of way of nothing.
But see, what they did with us, Paul, lighting, they just took it.
They'll take it, they'll take it.
They told, they told me, they said, "You either accept this, or we..."
So what will be the, the next move?
Would be...
We're going up for bid right now.
When the bids accepted.
But I, I, I...
Let's figure out who the resident is.
I make a motion that we, you know, go along with Jason, that we see who the resident is and talk with them and...
Promise Paul a meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll sit down with Paul and the resident and try to talk some common sense.
Might be a change order, a work order, change of work order. I, I mean, I doubt it, the way he's...
No, it's very common in construction to change stuff.
Yeah, oh, I know, we change.
And especially if it becomes a dangerous cross, you know, I mean, it's, you're creating a dangerous cross.
And it is already.
We're just gonna show it to the other.
Excellent. Can we get a, we have a, a motion by Jason?
To go in, to go ahead.
To, yeah.
To, to, when we, when the bid is accepted, that we take that opportunity to then have Paul come in and that person's...
With the resident, yeah.
Okay.
No problem.
You all forward to that one?
I, I'll second.
You have a second from Joanne, or are all those in favor?
Absolutely.
I've been up here a few times, it doesn't matter, a few more, it doesn't matter.
No, dear, no. Well, it is, come right up over the hill.
You should know that this, this board is behind you, you know, we are absolutely in agreement with you.
I mean, you know, just like I just said, who's gonna be liable if a kid walks off that?
That's right.
And why, the customer's on over.
State's right.
State's reliable, or rather, they're pushing on the town.
Well, or if they get down to cross, to the school, and a bus backs up and runs up.
Their, their design, Paul.
Well, the reason why they wouldn't put it at the nursing home side was why?
Because of the business.
No. Why wouldn't they let us put it on the nursing home side? Because they wouldn't land in a parking lot. The scene has changed at your place. It has become a parking lot.
Yeah.
It's not just a driveway anymore.
And the nursing home is not a parking lot.
Have you argued that?
Yeah.
Have you?
Yeah.
Because when they started this project, you didn't have a business there.
I argued that with her. When she came, she said, "Well, we're gonna do this and that." She says, "I didn't know you were gonna put a building in." And I says, "I didn't know that the town and you folks was gonna do what you're gonna do right now."
Right, wow, I'm just saying.
And she just went...
You got two parking lots now.
Oh, well.
So I think we've got an opportunity there, definitely.
I say we pave it in the morning.
Yeah, I'll agree.
Uh, to finish up before we go, again, I want to mention the auxiliary gathering for EMS and Lubec Fire Department, as I read this through, I want you to know. On May twenty-first at six P.M. at the Lubec Fire Station. It's a can't-miss, don't-miss. As promised from all of you out there, I'd like to throw out a belated happy birthday, because I missed it to make Arvin, a happy birthday to Judy Trappert and to Jimmy Buhner.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody who has birthdays, please email them to the office and we'll make sure we get it on here for you.
I stopped having a hand here today.
Uh, anybody else want to add anything else before we go?
I have a question. Does anybody ever notice the sailboat that's parked at the end of Stockford Park? That's on town property. Next time you're down by there, look down.
I know which one they're talking about this year.
It's been there for a long, long time.
I don't know.
Trying to find the owner of that, and try to get them to...
Do you know, but is there a number?
Was it the one that used to be in the, down in the library?
It's Mississippi registration.
Yeah, I don't know.
Got a what, Mississippi?
Yeah, it's on a main registry.
I have child's degree, one of them.
Yeah, I'm Dan.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a junior.
I don't know. It wasn't Fritz.
No.
Okay.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
You, everybody?
Who? I'm sorry, this is continuing.
Awesome.
I'm pretty bad. It is, I'll bet it is.
I like the...
Oh, yeah, it's a little...